The January 11th, 2021 meeting of the Rockingham County Planning Board will come to order. Members, as our first order of business pursuant to our new bylaws, we have to adopt the agenda. And while that may not be an item appearing on your agenda, it was intended that it be there. Before we do that, I want to remind you that also according to our new bylaws, there is a procedure for adopting or revising the agenda before it's adopted. If the agenda is revised before the meeting commences, only a majority is necessary to approve the revisions. If the agenda is revised after the meeting begins, a four-fifths majority is required. But since we're now going to revise the agenda before the meeting starts, a simple majority will do. I'm moving that we rearrange the order of the cases on the agenda because it would be prudent and in the best interest of the economy of time to separate the cases that don't require sworn testimony from those that do. Consequently, I'd like you to approve my motion for rearranging the cases so that case number three becomes number one. And you can mark these on your agenda. Case number four becomes number two. Case number one will be case number three. Case number five on your agenda will become case number four. And case number two will become five. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. The agenda is now revised. I further move that we adopt the agenda as revised.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries. At this time, the chair calls upon Mr. James Harris for our invocation.
Let us pray. Most gracious heaven and Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity that we could meet for our January 11th, 2021 Rockingham County Planning Board meeting. Be with us, Lord, as we review all the cases being presented before us tonight. Help us to make decisions that be beneficial to the requesting party and also to the citizens of Rockingham County. As these things your name. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Next item on agenda is approval of the meeting minutes of the last meeting. And I only have one correction. Item number one, they have me listed as vice chairman. It should read just chairman. I didn't know I got demoted. Are there any other changes to the minutes for the last meeting?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we accept the meeting minutes from the December 14th, 2020 meeting with one change in item number one. You are the chairman.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. At this time, I'll read the guidelines for the way these meetings are conducted. Any and all persons who would like to speak regarding any case being heard by the planning board must sign the case file roster prior to the beginning of the meeting. Additionally, each speaker must be recognized by the presiding board member prior to speaking. When recognized, each speaker must approach the podium and state their name and address before speaking. Unless otherwise specified, all testimony, evidence, and comments should be directed to the board chairperson or presiding board member. Each case will be presented to the board by a member of the planning staff. Following the staff presentation, the case applicant will be given the opportunity to brief the board regarding the case or application. Following the applicant's presentation, those who have signed up to do so will be granted the opportunity to speak against or in support of the proposal. If needed, the board chairperson reserves the right to set time limits for each speaker. After hearing from the public, the applicant will be given the opportunity for rebuttal. This will be followed by board discussion, motions, and voting procedures. The first case we're going to hear tonight is case number 2021-03. Tim, will you present this case to the planning board, please?
Good evening and Happy New Year, everybody. Before we get started, I just want to say that with Carrie out, I'm going to be doing this and I'm going to try my best to mimic her presentation. So it may look a little different, may seem a little different, but I appreciate your patience and your adaptability on the fly.
And Carrie is here to help answer questions, and I know Tim's getting to a great job.
Thank you. Okay, so first up, we have rezoning case number 2021-03. Applicant is requesting a rezoning from residential agricultural to highway commercial conditional district. This parcel is approximately four acres and located at the intersection of Williams Road and US 220. It directly abuts properties that are zoned RA and RP, which are residential and residential agricultural and residential protected, respectively. With other nearby and surrounding properties zoned residential agricultural, light industrial, and residential protected. Existing uses in the area are primarily residential agricultural and commercial. The requested parcel, it's not in a watershed, it's not in a floodplain, and it's located within the economic development land class, which is land designated for or to accommodate and encourage new industrial and commercial uses. And it's currently served by Rockingham County Water and Sewer. And if you need me to move back in slides or move forward, just let me know. Property is currently undeveloped, and its location on US 220 makes it more appropriate for commercial use than residential. The case has received no inquiries from the public, no phone calls or write-ins. And this is a request for a conditional district. So only uses under consideration are those requested by the applicant. Based on staff's analysis, the planning department recommends approval of rezoning with careful consideration of conditions necessary to ensure conformance to the land use plan and adequately address expected development impacts to the existing residents of the area.
Tim, can we bring up the correct slides?
I'm sorry.
Can we bring up the correct slides?
Sure. Yeah, I'm sorry about that. Here we go. Just let me know if you want me to move forward or backward. You can take your time.
So the notes here indicate that they're only going to use a small part of that four-acre plot? Is there any plans?
Yes, sir. That cutout that you see with the crosshairs, that's the part that's up for rezoning.
But not the entire?
Not the entire parcel, no, sir.
And Tim, just to clarify, that's directly beside the gas station there?
Yeah. Yeah.
Are there any other questions for staff? Thank you, Tim. I guess we'll hear from the applicant.
All right. Thank you.
Is Jeff Biggs here?
Yeah.
Would you please come forward, sir? Good. For the record, could you please state your name and address?
Yes, sir. Jeff Biggs, 505 West Hunter Street, Madison, North Carolina.
Thank you. And what is it that you would like the planning board to know about your application?
I've got the potential buyer here with me today, Eloy Torres. And he can answer what's going to go on the property if you want more info. But we're going to do some, try to rezone it to like storage buildings, sell storage buildings.
Self-storage?
Yeah. Not self-storage, but buildings that people buy and move to their sites.
Oh, I see.
Yeah. But that tax map you got there, it's actually the crossed-out area is, needs to be a little bit farther north. It's that field to the north of that crossed-out area, which Anthony Bone, Bone Surveying, has done a four-acre survey out of that.
That was an approximation of where we're going. We didn't have a pylon.
Okay. Cool. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm not as cool as Tim is on this stuff.
Any questions for Mr. Biggs?
You'd indicated it's to sell storage buildings?
Correct.
Okay. The Amish-type buildings?
Can I ask for Mr. Torres to come forward?
Well, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, I think we'll hear from Mr. Torres.
Eloy?
And I have a question.
For Mr. Torres?
Not for Mr. Torres.
Okay. Mr. Biggs, don't go away. There may be other questions for you. Please state your name and address, sir.
Eloy Torres, 457 Charlie Norman Road in Mount Airy, North Carolina.
In Mount Airy?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes. As he said, we trying to, one of the main problems we face in this industry is that when you rent out a area, which is, you know, to sell the barns, the first thing you know is the next year they raise up the rent and since you already have the clientele there, you pretty much forced to pay or leave the area. So what we doing in rental sheds, we trying to buy our own places where we can be sat there and nobody can, you know, run us out. So we doing this little bit of time. We already got one in Boone, I mean in Jefferson, North Carolina. We sold this piece of land and we are trying to buy. And what we do is pretty much what you say is the, excuse me. It's this type of sheds, it's a high-quality sheds. Everybody look at the same, everybody looks at them and they look the same, but we use high-quality materials. You know, when you look at them, they look like the Amish, but you know, the material we use, like I say, we use top-grade materials. And they engineer buildings. So if any county, and they pass, they engineer and seal for seven states. So, you know, it's a pretty secure building, you know? And we planning to give the, make it commercial where we can, you know, sell the buildings. It's going to be wood buildings, metal buildings, manufacturer trailers, and all types of outdoor supplies.
Are you manufacturing these on-site?
No, we don't manufacture them on-site. We pre-build them.
And bring them to the site?
Bring them to the site.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Biggs?
Yes, sir.
A question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Biggs, you don't own this property, do you?
Do not. Charles and Daniel Williams owns the property.
What is your relationship in this?
Listing agent, selling it for them.
And then I have a question for Mr. Torres, too.
Oh, Mr. Torres, do you need to come back up here, sir?
Sorry.
Good question for you.
Yeah. Mr. Torres, how many buildings do you anticipate will be, oh, first of all, what is the specific size? I didn't catch this in here, of the parcel?
Should be four acres.
Around four acres.
Is the whole parcel four acres or just this one small part?
The, it's a 20-acre tract. We're selling, we're selling four acres.
You're selling four acres?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. I got it. I see now. I got it. So on this four acres, how many buildings or garages or things will be on property at any given time?
We have, we are renting ones right now in Mount Airy. It's not even acre and a half. And I mean, the way we set it, I mean, sometimes you can put up, in less than two acres, acre and a half, you can put up to 40, 50 buildings, you know? And that's leaving space for the trucks to pull in, load, and unload. Because this, this come built, you know, pre-built and they just sitting on roads. I guess you have seen those, you know, here and there. And according on, I mean, sometimes you might see a full lot and, but in four acres, if you put, if you clean the four acres, you can put up to 200 buildings. But that's not what we're looking for, you know? Because we're going to put, like I say, trailers, I don't know, maybe some U-hauls and some of these metal, metal, metal garages, metal buildings, and wood barns.
And how, so what's going to be the, what is your plan for access to the road? If there's 200 buildings there?
He'll need a North Carolina driveway for that.
I'll just, I'll chime in and say he'll have to submit a site plan that lays out the property. And he's going to have to meet site design residential requirements for non-residential zoning districts. I don't know. We also have a, an ordinance for outdoor storage. And we'll, we'll see how much of that applies, but mostly he's going to have to submit a site plan and make sure that those requirements are approved and that he's meeting the building code.
Yeah. The maximum we can is like 50 builds. We don't put, we don't put more than 50 buildings on each lot.
So your site's also going to include an office?
Yeah.
That you mentioned. So then you added U-hauls and stuff like that. Can you elaborate on that?
Yeah. Yeah. I have you, I think you have seen this on the, on the road, you know, here and there. Like I say, if you go in town, Bridgeville, you see, I mentioned a few of these, some of our competitors, like Old Hickory, Old Hickory Buildings, there is Liberty Buildings, there is, you know, all these wood barn sheds.
Did you mention the word U-hauls? So that, that...
U-hauls, most of the times, every lot that has portable buildings and, you know, metal buildings, the U-hauls always approach because they see this, you know, and this, it all depends on who's going to run it. Like if we hire somebody local to run the business, you know, they might see a sales rep from these U-hauls, pretty much they always use every, every business that is in, have a frontage to the highways to try to place their products there, you know? It might work, it might not. It all depends on who's running it.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Biggs or Mr. Torres?
Only question, Jeff, I know you had mentioned that it needs to be moved down. Is it next to the park right there? And the four-acre starts from the...
Four acres is basically that field there, to the north of the...
And I guess it borders that?
That little road there goes back to the track.
Okay. Okay. Gotcha.
It runs from there to...
About 370 foot.
340, 400 feet.
Gotcha. Gotcha.
Thank you, gentlemen, you can be seated.
Paul, I just have one quick question for staff. Tim or Carrie, what's the setbacks with the highway commercial setbacks for buildings?
It's 35 in the front and then 15 on the side and rear.
Any other questions or discussion?
Did anybody, nobody else sign up to speak?
Yes. I'm sorry. I have the list right here. If you want me to hand that to you?
Yes.
For the record, please state your name and address.
Rudy Hefinger, 160 Landers Road, Madison.
And what is it that you want the planning board to know?
I just wanted to know what this land was going to be used for is something I want to know. I mean, is it a, is it like a dealership for, for storage buildings? Is that what it's more or less going to be?
Mm-hmm.
That's all. I just want to, you know, see what it was.
Well, did the previous discussion answer your questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. There being no other speakers, if there's no discussion or further questions, the chair will entertain a motion.
Yeah, I got it.
Do you have to say anything?
I'm a little concerned that if there's four acres here and there, there's enough room for up to 200 buildings. It seems like to me that that's just a lot of buildings. And that seems like to be a lot of buildings in that general vicinity anyway. So I don't know. I just...
Oh, he doesn't intend on placing buildings.
Yeah. He said 50, but there's, you know, we know how that goes. I don't know. I just, I have, I have a bit of a concern.
Are you proposing a, putting a limitation on it?
I think that would be appropriate.
We really can't, we really can't do that. And if, I don't see a valid, because it's going to be a commercial operation with, with storage buildings. Still have to do landscape buffers and imagine he'll be doing fencing to enclose the area and keep it safe. I don't know. John, John, are you there tonight?
No, John is not here, Carrie.
Okay. I'm not, I'm not, what's it, what help of the concern? Is it about appearance or what are you thinking?
I, I think it's, it's twofold. It's, it's appearance, but it's also a bit of critical mass there with the buildings. If you know that stretch of highway and the, the flavor of the community around it, you've already got one retailer of buildings sitting out there very close by. And will it be a building, you know, there's, it just seems to me that if we're looking sort of long range at how we want our communities to look and the growth that we want to, and how we want it to look, it, there's not, I just, I have a concern that there would be two large retailers of buildings very close by. And I don't know whether that's a valid concern or not.
Is the other one limited? By the way, I'm not sure if I remember, I'm trying to picture that other business.
And it doesn't, there's nowhere near 200 buildings on that site.
Which is, they're chucked in a smaller business.
Well, it's not so much a smaller business. And that one has grown across the road, too. I, I just envision a four-acre plot and it's going to be jam-packed with buildings and it's just, and... And this is, I mean, this is very, a very focal area of our county. And to have, have that critical mass, and I don't, you know, I'm not opposed to people doing their business and making money, but do we want two, but basically car lots or, you know, building car lots or, you know, that's what I envision. So again, I don't know whether my concern is founded or not.
I don't see how this differs very much from an automobile dealership who has a competitor across the street or in some cases abutting his own property. Ford dealership may be followed immediately by a Chevrolet dealership and they've got hundreds of cars out there. And the property is eligible for commercial development and the characterization of the property is commercial. I don't have a problem with approving this request.
Also, we mentioned that if he's going to designate a lot size, he's got 10 buildings, 20 buildings, 50 buildings. He's got to stay within his lot size boundary.
Yeah, exactly.
So therefore, it wouldn't be a question of how many buildings because after he gets so many buildings on it, he's going to reach his max and that's it. Another thing, there's about three other building sellers on that artery, too. So well, competition won't hurt nobody.
The other point is, is that, is that there's only so much inventory that it's worth putting there.
Right.
If you clog that up with all of your inventory, then you compromise your other locations that you supply inventory to. So I, I would imagine that they would overload that particular site with all that inventory.
And one other note is they're going to have to have access in and out with the gravel. I'm assuming probably a circle drive may be through that circles back through. So they'll have to gain, you know, have some space for that. Plus your turf, your flatbed and trucks to back up, turn around, drop off the trailers.
And that, like Paul was saying before, they'll have to have a driveway permit from NCDOT.
Yes. So can we, can we place any restrictions on the type of driveway or is it?
No, it's up to the North Carolina Department of Transportation.
So, yeah, I, and where my head is on this is that, yeah, a little competition is fine. And you actually, they, thank you for, because I envisioned something a little bit different now that you explained it that way. That said, I'm just wondering if when we start talking about what we want the, particularly commercial growth to look like moving forward, is it, do we, we're almost setting the marker here because if there are, in that corridor, and this is a very important corridor to this community or to this county, if we start setting up things where there are multiples of, of something instead of a range of types of commercial activity, that's, that's a point. And I can be, you know, I'm kind of on the fence about it now, but... And I can be, you know, I'm kinda on the fence about it now, but, um, I, I, I'm just trying to look forward. What do we want that artery to look like? What do you want, what do we want that corridor to look like in the long run?
It's frustrating. I'm sorry, go ahead.
On the other hand, I don't think we can restrict anybody from taking advantage of location, location, location. If that's where the business is booming for that type of product, everybody wants in.
And I guess the market will dictate. If there's too many storage buildings on that corridor, then, then, uh, they, they, they won't move, so they'll have to switch gears. But I guess the market will dictate how well they, they sell.
What I was just gonna say, thanks Phillip.
Do what, Carrie?
That was, that's exactly what I was just gonna say. You have an area that you want to promote growth and of course you want a variety of businesses, but the market has to dictate what businesses are going in there. And really your, your realm of control is with whatever zoning standards and appearance standards. And I know there hasn't been a lot of really strong appetite on the part of the, of leadership to impose strict appearance standards. They're, um, they're more about encouraging business to follow the market and locate there.
Any other discussion or questions among members? If not, it's time for a motion.
I'll move to make a motion to approve. The planning board has reviewed the highway commercial conditional district zoning amendment and adopts the following statements as required by NC General Statute 153A-341 and 153A-342. After considering Rockingham County adopted comprehensive plans, the planning board recommends approval of case number 2021-03. This action is consistent with the adopted Rockingham County land use plan. The zoning amendment supports the intent and descriptions of the economic land development class. The board considers this action in adopting the proposed zoning amendment to be reasonable because, A, the proposed use is an appropriate use for the land concerning its, its effect upon the entire community as a social, economic, and political unit. The size of this parcel is appropriate for the district requested. The property for this request abuts properties that are currently zoned highway commercial and residential ag. The board considers this actions in adopting this zoning amendment to be in the public interest because the proposed development has sufficient design features that's compatible with or, or exceed the quality of existing developments in the community. The, the uses permitted in highway commercial conditional district would have similar impacts as the surrounding residentially zoned properties. This would not impose significant harm on the neighbors and surrounding community. Furthermore, the proposed rezoning is designed to meet or exceed all requirements and goals of the existing UDO and the comprehensive plan. On the balance, the following factors, the size of the track in question, number two, the compatibility of the zoning action with this comprehensive plan, the benefits and detriments resulting from the zoning action for the owner of the newly permitted property, the neighbors and the surrounding community, and the relationship between the envisioned permitted use and the uses currently present in adjacent tracks weigh in favor of approving this proposed zoning amendment. Additional comments, as we know, we're currently looking at a, um, this area is our future economic growth and I think this follows within that as well.
Is there a second to that motion? A motion has been made and seconded to approve the zoning application for case number 2021-03. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign, there being no opposition. The motion is carried. Mr. Biggs and Mr. Torres, just so that you know, zoning approvals by this board result in a recommendation to the county commissioners for final approval. We, although we're recommending it, we don't have the authority to, to give you approval for this rezoning. You can attend a meeting which I believe is scheduled for February 15th in this very room with the Gil, uh, Rockingham County Commissioners and they'll give you the final disposition on this request. At this time, we're gonna move to our next case, which is 2021-05 and we'll hear from staff.
Okay, make sure we're looking at the right one though. Okay, we have rezoning case number 2021-05. Applicant is requesting a rezoning from residential agricultural to light industrial. The requested parcel is 0.65 acres and it's located on the south side of Silvania Road and directly north of where it intersects with NC 65.
Can I stop us real quick?
Sure.
Are we following, I mean, it's not on me, but are we following the agenda? I don't know if I've made a wrong notation. I had number two as the 04.
Number four. Yep.
Well, did I mess up?
I thought, were we doing the rezoning cases first?
You're right, you're exactly right. We need to hear from case 2021-02.
Okay.
Oh, wait a minute. But I mean, it does make sense that we have to go out. But we have to go and update the agenda again, the, okay, okay.
We're 04, right?
Should be.
Okay.
Yeah, the rezon, rezoning, we should be hearing.
Yeah, so we're doing 05, the other rezoning case?
Yes.
Okay.
Since we, since we voted the new...
According to parliamentary procedure, we absolutely do.
I make a motion that we approve the agenda change for, please help me.
Second. All those in favor? Okay, we've reached the four fifths, or exceeded the four fifths majority required for revision of the minutes during the course of the meeting, so go ahead.
Okay, continue with 05?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
It's whack-a-mole.
I need professional help.
All right, I'm just gonna start over with my spiel and then we'll go from there, all right. So, we have 2021-05. This applicant is requesting a rezoning from residential agricultural to light industrial. The requested parcel is 0.65 acres and it's located on the south side of Silvania Road and directly north of where it intersects with NC 65. The abutting properties are zoned light industrial to the north, south, and west, and then residential agricultural to the west as well. Properties on the other side of NC 65 are zoned light industrial and highway commercial. The surrounding properties are within an area bounded by US 220 and State Highways 68 and 65. A portion of the property is located in a designated watershed, Troublesome Creek 3. So, any development would be subject to Rockingham County watershed ordinances. The property is located within the economic development land class, which is land designated to accommodate and encourage new industrial and commercial uses and will be served by Rockingham County Public Water and Sewer. This request is a straight rezoning with no conditions. So when making a decision for straight rezoning, the board must consider all allowed uses in the respective zoning district. No testimony referencing current or future uses should be discussed, nor may any testimony of this nature be considered in making the decision to grant or deny the rezoning. You can refer to those uses in the supplemental handout that I provided that's labeled 2021-05. It's just the permitted use, uses for you to review. This case also, it had no write-ins or phone calls from the public. Based on staff's analysis, the planning department recommends approval of the request for rezoning from residential agricultural to light industrial.
Any questions for staff?
Tim, did we, did we just rezonate right there? Was it, was it one of these in popularity or is it something different?
I believe the property, if you're looking directly north across Silvania, that bigger part, uh, that was just rezoned later, late last year.
Yeah, Phillip, this is part of the corporate park. This is just about them acquiring an additional acreage to incorporate into the, um, into the park there.
So, did, is this the same group or entity that, that rezoned the other parcel?
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yes.
Matter of fact, this is the tract that I think they were there asking questions about that. So it looks like maybe there might be a
Yes.
acquisition here of that, where the house was and things.
Yeah. I should've told you this case would probably sound really familiar to you.
They'll be, they'll be coming forward with zonings as they acquire properties to contribute to the corporate park.
Further questions for staff? Thank you, Tim.
All right, thanks.
Is Mr. Al Leonard here? If he would, sir, for the record, please state your name and address.
Sure, Al Leonard, uh, 201 North Elm Street, Greensboro, Suite 201.
And what is it that you would like the planning board to know about your application?
I'm sorry?
What is it that you would like the planning board to know about your application?
Well, the planning staff has done a good job explaining, you know, we're here a few months ago, rezoned the 25 acres across Silvania, which included the square kind of in the lower left, lower right-hand corner and then the parcel that's immediately east and south, the little wedge piece there. Also, I'm not sure why it didn't get colored in, uh, purple. And then we own the site on the other side of 65, which is the project optic site. So, when we were here a couple of months ago, we had indicated then that we were in the process of acquiring this parcel. And so, that's why we're here tonight.
Okay. We have the answering questions. Any questions for Mr. Leonard?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or discussion by members? If not, chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the land use or approve the rezoning request. The planning board has reviewed the light industrial zoning amendment and adopts the following statements as required by NCGS 153A-341 and 153A-342. After considering Rockingham County adopted comprehensive plan, the planning board recommends the approval of case number 2021-05. This action is consistent with the adopted Rockingham County land use plan. This zoning amendment does support the intent and descriptions of the economic development land class. The board considers its action and, the board considers its actions in adopting the proposal, proposed zoning amendment to be reasonable because the proposed use is appropriate for the land concerning its effects on the entire community as a social, economic, and political unit. The size and parcel is appropriate for the district requested and the property, the property for the request abuts properties that are currently zoned residential agricultural. Wait a minute, am I reading right? Yeah. The board considers this action in adopting, adopting this zoning amendment to be the public interest because the proposed development has sufficient design features so as to be compatible with or exceed the quality of existing developments in the neighborhood. The uses permitted in the light industrial district would have similar impacts as surrounding residentially zoned properties. This would not impose significant harm on the neighbors and surrounding community. The proposed rezoning is designed to meet or exceed all requirements and goals of the existing UDO and the comprehensive land plan. On balance, the following factors, the size and track in question, the compatibility of the zoning action with the comprehensive plan, the benefits and detriments resulting from the zoning action for the owner of the newly permitted property, the neighbors and the surrounding community, and the relationship between the envisioned permitted use and the uses currently present in adjacent tracks weigh in favor of approving the proposed zoning amendment.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded, excuse me, to approve case number 2021-05. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign, there being no opposition. The approval is granted to make a recommendation to the county commissioners at their meeting on February 15th that this zoning be approved by them. The next three cases that the board is going to hear are different in nature from a rezoning in that they require procedures similar to that of a court proceeding. The speakers will be sworn in, you'll have to take an oath, and there are certain rules of evidence that we have to follow. These hearing, uh, these cases or hearings are quasi judicial evidentiary hearings. That means it's like a court hearing. State law sets specific procedures and rules concerning how this board must take its decision. These rules are different from other types of land use decisions like rezoning cases. This board's discretion is limited. The board must base its decision upon competent, relevant, and substantial evidence in the record. A quasi judicial decision is not a popularity contest. It is the decision constrained by the standards and the ordinance and based on the facts presented. You, if you will be speaking as a witness, please focus on the facts and standards, not personal preference or opinions. Participation is limited. This meeting is open to the public, everyone is welcome to watch. Parties withstanding have rights to participate fully. Parties may present evidence, call witnesses, and make legal arguments. Parties are limited to the applicant, the local government, and individuals who can show they will suffer special damages. Other individuals may serve as witnesses when called by the board. General witness testimony is limited to facts, not opinions. For certain topics, this board needs to hear opinion testimony only from expert witnesses. These topics include projections about impacts on property values and projections about impacts of increased traffic. Individuals providing expert opinion must be qualified as experts and provide the factual evidence upon which they base their expert opinion. Witnesses must swear or affirm their testimony. That being said, we will now ask staff to present us with our next case. I'm sorry? If we have one.
We're doing 2021-01 first?
No, we're gonna do 2021-dash...
01.
Yes, 01.
Okay.
Just for clarification, we go 142 or 124?
We're gonna hear 01. Then we're gonna hear...
If we switched to...
02 will be next.
02.
Okay.
And then 05.
And then we'll hear 05.
You mean 04?
No. Yes, 01.
Okay. We have case number 2021-01. Uh, this is a special use permit application to allow for a double wide manufactured home in a residential protected district. The property is located in Eden, approximately 2.39 acres in size and sits just west of NC 87 and directly south of... NC 87 and directly south of the Virginia line. The surrounding area is mostly single-family homes and undeveloped lots. The property is located within the urban transition land class of the Rockingham County land use plan, which is land designated to encourage both urban and economic development. For this case, we received no write-ins. We did have one phone call, but the person did not state their name, and they just wanted to learn more about what was going on. Based on staff's analysis and the UDO requirements, the planning department recommends approval with the following conditions. One, the applicant must comply with the site plan approval by and any other conditions imposed by the board. Number two, the applicant is responsible for obtaining and complying with all required permits and approvals. And number three, the applicant must follow all the requirements of the manufactured housing Class 2A special permit, which are listed in the Rockingham County Unified Development
Any questions for staff?
So there are no other double-wide trailers in that area? There's, there's like three streets or three roads in that area, none of them, there aren't any double-wide trailers at all. So this is an introduction of a double-wide trailer into an area?
Yeah, this would be the first double-wide manufactured home.
I will make a note from just looking around, test car, there looks like a on-frame modular couple houses down, which I know is, is different. It isn't, it isn't modular.
I noticed that, remember?
But it appears to me on on-frame mod, but just for the record.
All of them have foundation, brick foundations and stuff like, so it's a different class.
Yeah, right. Just curious, and you probably have no idea, and I don't know, Carrie Wood either, do we know why that area went, you know, I guess through the last EGO was done for RP, or rezoned for RP? Was there a reason or just?
Oh, yeah, I'm not sure. Carrie?
Getting myself unmuted. I don't know. There are a lot of pockets like this, Philip, in the county that are zoned RP. And I'm honestly not sure, because we've seen this a lot where there are blocks of RP zoning with a lot of different housing types.
Thank you.
Sorry, wasn't more helpful.
In the, in the photograph, is this the Virginia border?
Yes. Yeah.
So that's the warehouse, the, the big triangular thing in the top. That's the warehouse.
Yeah, you want me to back up to the zoning?
No.
Okay. Yeah, that is.
Okay.
Was there any analysis on the terrain in there? Because when I drove by there today, it's, it's, it almost looks like a watershed through that, through that property. Was there any analysis on that impact?
Yeah, there, there's no water. It's not located in a watershed.
Okay.
Which I guess from the environmental health safety, and you can see the wet weather creek, it's more like a drainage probably to the back. I guess that hints why the septic field has been front.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Tim. Is Mr. John Wright here? Please come forward, sir. There should be a Bible to your right there. If you would put your left hand, raise your right hand, and repeat after me. Or just answer the question. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Planning Board on the matters at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, sir.
Okay, please step to the podium and give us your name and address, please.
I'm John Wright. I live at 203 North Hamilton Street, Eden, North Carolina.
And since you're the applicant, what would you like us to know about your application?
I have, now, every, every house is a castle, you know what I'm saying? But I have a few pictures that, you know, you say a double-wide, it looks like it's downgrading, but some of these, sir, is brick underneath and out, but they look like a single trailer. I mean, I have pictures in that area, same area. And we have, it's already been perked, and we was going with another house, but it was about $1,100 payment. And she's on short time at Mohawk, and I'm retired, middle brewing company. And we just wanted to go with our budget, you know, at 1,100. I mean, that's a little stepping it out too much, I think. And I have some pictures for the record, if anybody'd like to see.
Uh, we can, we can accept photographic evidence.
And I'm not putting this down on these people or nothing, I'm just showing you what is around in that same.
Are these, are these, the homes typical of what you want to put up, or are they neighbors?
Well, I think a double, I think a new double-wide would look better than, it looks like a single. That's just what I'm saying, thank you.
We can accept your photographic evidence for review.
Okay.
James, if you would, please.
Of course, this home, double-wide would be independent and everything, brick and all. That's in the same neighborhood.
I think one of those pictures, it doesn't look like a double-wide.
Looks like a single.
Because I drove around that area today, looking at all of it. Is this actually a named neighborhood subdivision, or is it just kind of, I guess, established the roads and not really a tree?
Mr. Coons in, in Horns, yes, a long time ago, 1972. And the rights of the land is, all, in that areas, went out in 2011.
It's not a subdivision.
Okay, okay.
There, it, there's a cluster of houses in there, but it's not, it's not like.
It's not.
But it's not, it's not restricted.
Yeah.
There's plenty of excess, just standing trees, lots.
James, when you're done, if you could give those to Philip, please.
Okay. I want to ask, one of the pictures here, what's this?
That's a cinder block house.
So are we?
That's why they're ruined on the land.
It looks like a store.
I'm asking questions now.
No, not yet. Let's look at his evidence.
Thank you, Sam. The land has already been perked, and I have a paper that Ms. Gann did the septic tank in the way the house would be sitting and all that.
Yeah, we don't, we don't need that.
Okay.
Any questions for Mr. Wright?
I have a couple of questions. Mr. Wright, the, the double-wide or dwelling, manufactured dwelling that you're proposing to put on this piece of property, how many square feet is this home gonna be?
Probably 13 to 1,500.
And you do intend to live there, correct?
Yes, ma'am. In my life.
And you are using?
Dan Rebel water.
Pardon me?
It's Dan Rebel water on that.
Okay. And do you have, have you, is the manufacturer of this home already picked out?
No, ma'am.
He'll have to meet the building code.
Yeah.
The size, the size won't be relevant.
Yeah, I know that.
So he can't like put cheap Joe's manufacturing housing on this?
Manufacturing house Class 2A applies here.
Yeah, yeah.
You got it.
I had no other questions.
Any other questions for Mr. Wright? Okay, thank you, sir. You may be seated, but I'll be calling you back for rebuttal of other speakers. Is Don or Rhonda Blaster here? Are you both gonna speak to the same subject?
Yeah.
Okay, then, could you designate just one of you then?
Okay.
Bill, place your hand on the, your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Planning Board on the matters at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Good.
Okay, please step back to the podium and give us your name and address.
My name's Don Blaster. My address is 1427 Delaware Avenue in Eden.
And what is that?
And we own, we own property in the, in the area in question on, we own property on Brenda Court, at 153 Brenda Court, and we're, we've got plans, we've already started the, with the permit to put a septic tank in. So we're building a house from scratch in, in that area. And my biggest concern is the effect it might have on property values for my house.
Sir, I guess you didn't hear me at the beginning of the meeting, that's opinion. Do you have an appraiser or someone that can?
No, I didn't.
We can't, we can't consider opinion testimony.
And, and second is, one of the reasons we bought into that property was that it was restricted and double-wide trailers and single-wide trailers were not supposed to be in there.
And by whom was it restricted?
Excuse me?
By whom was it restricted?
Uh, there was a big sign right there at the top of the road that said restricted on there, and that was supposed to be part of the restrictions.
Philip, you ever heard of such a thing?
It's probably because, we were probably talking about maybe the zoning.
Is there a homeowners association up there that could do that?
Not, not that I'm aware of, but I think maybe the restriction was that it was, RP zoning wouldn't allow manufactured homes within there. There could be restrictive covenants if there was a neighborhood or something attached, but it doesn't sound like that's the case here when this was developed. But it probably was due to the zoning being restricted to RP.
And whomever put this sign up didn't understand that there is a process to allow manufactured homes through, through zoning?
Or maybe they did.
Do what?
Maybe they did, and they just put it on the sign.
Yeah, just being.
Anyone can make a sign and put what they want on it.
That's right.
What else would you like the planning board to know?
That's it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I want to ask, what, what street did you say you were planning on utilizing?
Brenda Court, it's the street in the center. You go down Sharon Lane, making an immediate right and then immediate left, and that, that street, Brenda Court.
Oh, yeah, I see it.
Oh, okay.
So where is your lot?
At 153.
153, it's on the, right at the top of, top of the hill, right there on the right as you go up.
So at the beginning of the street or the end of the street?
In the middle, more or less.
Okay.
1.66 acres. About an acre and a half.
Uh, about 1.7, something like that.
So it's, so it's quite a few lots separating your property from this one, isn't it?
There's, there's four houses beyond mine on the, on the opposite side of the street.
Yeah.
Any questions for Mr. Blaster? Okay, thank you, sir. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Planning Board on the matters at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yeah.
Okay, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Kevin Flint. I live on 270 Michelle Lane, that's at the end of the road to the left.
Okay, I see it on the map. And what is it that you would like the planning board to know?
Well, I do know for a fact, there should be something on file, there are restrictions, because I had to sign restriction papers whenever I bought that property back in 2008. And also when I bought the 19 acres adjacent to my property in, I think, two years ago. So there are restrictions, because the right company had presented them to me whenever I signed the papers to purchase the land.
And what, how long ago was that?
In both instances, 2008, and I believe the other was about two, two and a half years ago.
So you consider Pine Forest, does that sound right?
I think so. But I do know there are restrictions on double wides and, and that type of home and single wides.
And if there is a deed restriction for the neighborhood, and it hadn't already went away, then that would be a factor.
But it should have been presented to him when he purchased that property, just like it was to me on both times I purchased both pieces of my property. And it was presented to my stepfather, mother, who just presented, it was presented to them as well when they purchased that acre and a half from me. So those restrictions are still there.
Carrie, what do, what do we know about this?
Yeah, here I am. The, we found, unless the gentleman who's speaking now can help us with a reference, we could, perhaps we could look it up in the register of deeds. We don't enforce those restrictions, and it's really up to the property owners to be sellers and buyers to be aware of them. But if you have a copy to either quote to me, I can actually look it up for you, or...
I don't have it with me, but I could probably get ahold to my wife and maybe get some kind of reference.
The most we can do is for this potential buyer to warn him that he needs to research and ensure that there aren't any restrictions against what he wants to do. We wouldn't be able to enforce that. It would be an issue with the neighborhood.
Right.
It would be wise to perhaps follow up with you to, to see if there's a, or we'd be happy to, to let you follow up with us and then reach back out to this potential buyer if you don't want to be involved.
Okay, who would I need to follow up with?
Whoever put the restrictions on the property.
Was the right company the one that developed the property?
Who is the right company?
So they're a builder slash developer in, in Eden. And so if they subdivided this parcel and put a set of covenants attached to it, even though it might not have a homeowner association, a neighbor could take them to small claims court over this, and that would be the process for homeowners, since there's no association involved.
Philip, what is the name of the subdivision, do we think, or the covenant we're listed under?
It appears to be Pine, Pine Forest, is what it appears.
Two words. Let me see what I can find, I'm gonna mute myself for a minute.
And it looks like that it may have Phase 1 and Phase 2.
Okay.
I can't actually get the register of deeds to come up to actually view the...
I'll do it on my regular computer here.
I have it.
You got it?
Yeah, what, what are we asking? It's not, it's not showing, this parcel on Michelle is not showing, it does, it doesn't have any of, anything else other than it's a lot.
Which ones are covered by the covenant, then? I guess that's what our question was. We can, we can't...
I'm gonna go into the register of deeds website itself and see if I can find anything.
Yeah, this is Pine Forest.
Regardless, the decision as to whether the double-wide is appropriate really cannot be based on the covenants. I know it doesn't seem to make sense, but it is a different issue. issue.
So, it looks like technically the lot in question here is Lot 1 of Pine Forest, and I'm pretty sure you might be Lot 5.
I'm not sure, to be honest with you.
Pine Forest.
But I'm, I basically own the whole right side of Brende Court, too, so...
I got you.
Only thing I'm seeing is plats. I'll look, zoom in and see if there's a, a deed referenced. But the registered deeds under Pine Forest, the only thing I'm seeing is plats. Again, we have to be careful, because this isn't, whether there's covenants or not, or, or homeowners association or not, really isn't ours to enforce. This is the case where you would decide whether or not zoning was appropriate, and then the property owner would have to verify that he can legally do what he wants to do.
It just seems kind of odd that we can grant permission to do this when we're aware of covenants that prohibit it.
Understand, it puts you in an awkward, where you're putting somebody into a legal issue.
What, what concerns me more is that if we do this, the, and it should go to litigation, then the applicant would say, "Well, the Rockingham County Government vis-à-vis the planning board told me I could do this."
So, that, that makes me think, maybe you want to continue the case until you can see proof of the existence of...
My suggestion...
Or disproves the fact that there are, are not covenants.
I do have one question.
Carrie, my, my suggestion is that we do the following, that we change the nature of this case to an evidentiary hearing, where we just take evidence, but we won't render any decision.
All right.
The decision will be pending further investigation of the restricted covenants by the Wright Company to see what the...
And you're, when you do that, Paul, are you still able to accept evidence?
Yes.
Okay.
We can, we can take in here testimonial evidence. We can take physical evidence, documentary evidence, and hear witness testimony, but we will withhold a decision until probably the February, first meeting in February, to render a decision on this, which should give us ample time to investigate the strength, legal strength of these covenants.
And you, and on the February 8th meeting, you can further accept evidence, because you'll need to accept the evidence at the...
Exactly.
The meeting?
Exactly, but we can get a lot of it out, we can get a lot of it out of the way tonight.
It makes sense to me. It's, it's, it's basically similar to continuing a legislative hearing.
Okay, well, we only have one more speaker to go, so...
Okay.
Let's go ahead and accept the evidence to this point, but we won't render any decision. Are you still there, Carrie?
Agreed, just, yeah, agreed, Paul. I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you. I guess you just, you all heard what I just said. Hold on, sir. The nature of this case hearing is going to change to what's called an evidentiary hearing, and we're going to accept any documents and witness testimony, but there'll be no decision tonight pending an investigation of the legal strength of the covenants that have been put in place allegedly by the Wright Company. So, we have one more speaker. Mr. Flint?
I want to make it, I want to just make it clear from, so I could retract what I, what I said about, this, this is up to the, the applicant. The, the burden of proof of evidence is on the applicant. It's not on our, on our staff.
Right. Well, I'll get to that when I call him up for rebuttal.
Okay.
But in the meantime, we're going to go ahead and take the rest of the witness testimony.
I have a question for Mr. Flint.
Did you have a question for Mr. Flint?
I did.
Mr. Flint, you need to come back up, sir. Have a question for you.
Okay. Mr. Flint, confirm for me, it's 248 Michelle Lane that, that you're, where you live?
My property is 270 Michelle Lane.
270, okay. But you also own, you said that you own...
The whole right side of the road on Brende Court.
Okay.
And everything between my house and it.
Okay. And there, there are other houses on these properties? Am I...
No. There are no houses on the property. I don't own others than mine. Now, I did sell another, I think it's three acres, to my brother, which is between my house and this property that we're talking about. I did sell that to him, and he put a manufactured home, but it was a modular home, which actually cost him about $60,000 more than a regular double wide to make it a acceptable property, house to go on that property. So, and this was just two years ago.
Yeah, so, and your brother is Harold Flint?
Yes. His wife is actually back here, but she didn't get in here in time to sign the paper to be able to speak, so...
Okay, so, at 248 Michelle Lane, there's a manufactured home. Not a man, there's a modular home.
It's a modular.
Thank you for that correction.
Like I said, it's, I think it's like a $60,000 uptick to turn a manufactured home into a modular home, and that's what he did.
Which RP does allow.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I can't, I have difficulty reading your handwriting, sir.
Left-handed.
Why, like that?
Please place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Planning Board on the matters at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you, God?
Yes, I agree.
Okay, if you would please go to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Ricky Browning, 225 Michelle Lane, Eden, North Carolina.
Okay, and what is it that you want the planning board to know?
I would want to reiterate what Mr. Flint had said about the restrictions.
Okay, well, we, we already have that.
Yeah, so, it sounds like you've got some facts in there to get straightened out, so I just wanted to, to reiterate what he had said to make sure that everything was covered.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
I have...
Mr. Wright, if you could return to the podium, please? All right, the planning board has heard from you, and we've heard from witnesses who sound like that they're against your proceeding with your project.
Yes, sir.
On the grounds, alleged grounds, that there are some restrictive covenants.
Yes, sir.
It's up to you to contact your real estate agent, or the Wright Company, or whoever put up those signs regarding the restrictive covenant, and present proof to this board at the February 8th meeting, which will table this case until then, as to whether or not those covenants are binding upon you.
Is it the 8th or 15th?
The first meeting, is it, isn't it the 8th? Philip, you got your schedule?
It's the 8th.
It's the 8th.
It's a planning board meeting. He was confusing it with the board of commissioners meeting.
Yeah.
I have two questions. If you did approve a double wide, if it went by the code, could you still have one? And number two, I have a paper from Joe Madry. It said, "These covenants are restricted, shall run for a period of 40 years from this date, and at the expiration, the owners may join in changing the renewal same."
Is that from attorney Joe Madry?
2011.
I'll take a look at that, sir.
But I, I believe the neighborhood was established, when was the neighborhood established, though?
Forty years ago. I think it's 72. When it was established, him and George Combs, dummy, Homer Wright and George Combs was together, the last one, sir.
The plat was recorded in 1997. That includes the lot that is in, in front of you tonight. Pine Forest Phase 2 was recorded in 1997.
Carrie, according to a paper from attorney Joseph Madry of Eden, the deed of restrictions goes back to October 1st, 1971.
Probably, probably from the first phase. Does it, um, does it refer to one or another phase? Does it refer, how does it describe the neighborhood?
Originally known as the old place, or odle place, O-D-L-E place?
I think that's right.
It's one of the roads.
Book 485 at page 554.
I guess the question is, is was those covenants attached to Phase 2, or, or was it just on Phase 1?
I've got the rest of the papers, sir. Because we've had Mike say to describe it. It's two papers. That's the first one. I got the other.
Yes, yes, I'd like to look at it.
What was the page? 485 at what page?
554.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I didn't read no farther than that, but he did pull that out.
Was originally executed by W.T. and Sarah Combs. Jeez, no swine, cattle, horses, mules, goats, or chickens. Guess farming's out.
Well, there goes the pigs.
After 2011. I mean, you can have chickens now. 2011 is out.
Well, you're not going to be bringing any chickens up there according to this.
What are you looking at right now? What book page? Are you looking at that deed that you just described, 485, 554?
Yes.
It's just, it looks like a deed of... Does this look like a conveyance deed, but I don't see the restrictions that you're talking about?
Carrie, tell you what I'm going to do. Since I've accepted this into evidence, I'm going to leave it with Tim, and he can scan it and fax it to you, or scan it and email it to you, rather.
Yeah. You might be better off taking the picture and texting it to me, if we're going to...
Paul, does, does that reference a plat book and page? What it's describing, what, what it's, what it's actually putting covenants on?
No, not that I see. Philip?
Is that on this piece of property?
Well, now, here's another one in book 685, page 497.
685, 497.
Yep. I think that's what I've got in my hand, because the top copy says 497 at the top.
Yeah.
Well, I'm seeing on the, on, well, on the property.
Okay, yeah, that's a deed of, deed of restrictions dated October 1st, 1971.
But that's what the gentleman is referencing, that, that those covenants were in for a certain amount of time.
Odle place, a complete description in 485, 554.
There's been activity with this, because the setback was changed from 50 to 35 feet through an amendment on 8/28/92, and...
Let me look here.
And Carrie, I know we're trying to analyze deeds and, and covenants that we wasn't aware of. I mean, is this, is this something that, that we're going to table for time for more research, or is that something that...
Yes, yes.
I, I think that would be, I think that would be wise, because we don't, we don't have enough time to really validate the, the documents.
No, we need to move along. We have other cases to hear.
So, but would, any witnesses there that have documentation that they can?
No, I have, the only documentation...
Instead of waiting till the 8th would be great.
The only documentation submitted is what we're discussing right now.
It, it's still, I mean, we're still, they, they need to be...
Well, it'll be up to Mr. Wright to furnish us with additional documentation.
This information to the applicant who needs to consult with the attorney to see whether or not they're valid.
Okay.
We still have to be careful that we're not really, we're not in, in a place or authorized to interpret deeds and covenants.
Stop.
It might be something that he could refer to Mr. Madry about.
I was going to say, Carrie, is it, is it the applicant, Mr. Wright, should he maybe consult with Joe Madry and maybe have Joe provide a statement?
I'd be the thing to do.
That would, that would help. Other, otherwise, if there is a, is this just a person-to-person sale, or isn't a realtor involved?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. We've got a student involved.
And, and is this, if there's a realtor involved, there'll be an attorney there? If there's a mortgage involved, there might be legal help there, but I think the first thing to do would be to reach out to Mr. Madry, just see if he could help.
That'd be my recommendation, too.
Yeah, I, I agree, Philip.
All right, let's move on to the next case, then.
Will you, will you make a motion to, to formally change the, the case to an evidentiary hearing and, and make a decision on the 8th? Paul's have, do a, a first motion and a second?
I don't believe we need to do a motion. We'll just re-enter this item and carry it on to the, to the next meeting agenda.
Okay.
Since we're not making a decision here, it's strictly gathering of evidence. Okay, the next case we're going to hear is, oh, let's see, 2... Right, case number 2021-02.
Up next, we have case number 2021-02. This is a special use permit application to operate an airsoft facility in a residential agricultural district. Now, this property might seem familiar to you. In November of last year, the applicant came before the planning board to request a rezoning of that same parcel, residential agricultural. That has since been heard and approved. And this is Phase 2 of his overall plan, which is to apply for a special use permit to operate that airsoft facility. This is on property located at 1404 Miss Beach Church Road in Williamsburg Township. The property is approximately 11.4 acres in size, and it's predominantly characterized by residential and agricultural uses. The property falls within the rural transition land class, which is land designated to accommodate existing residential neighborhoods while also retaining the area's rural character, but with a strong demand for continued residential development. Just give me. For this case, we did not receive any write-ins or phone calls for this particular case. Based on staff's analysis and the UDO requirements, the planning department recommends approval with the following conditions. Number one, the applicant must comply with the site plan approved by and any other conditions imposed by the board. Number two, the applicant is responsible for obtaining and complying with all required permits and approvals. And number three... And number three, the applicant must follow all requirements for the paintball facility special use permit, which are listed in the Rockingham County Unified Ordinance. That's everything.
I'll add that if the board... Well, we chose this use as the closest approximate use to what the applicant is asking for. And I think we talked about that at the zoning hearing as well. So, there are conditions listed in the special use permit description that the site plan would vary, particularly a setback condition. The applicant is offering the installation of fencing for airsoft rather than the paintball facility condition to have a 300-foot setback. Paul, you can talk more about this when it comes to it. But I'm just suggesting that you make that... Clearly make that a part of your motion that as you prove it, you're approving... You're using the special use permit for a paintball facility, but you're approving it for airsoft, and you're approving it according to the site plan, which allows a change in the setback.
Right.
The other thing that you asked me about earlier, about the porta-johns, the condition that the applicant has to meet all other requirements and permits would cover that.
Okay.
And Tim and I also talked about this. We were gonna suggest that the applicant come into the office and talk to the building inspector and health department about those details.
Okay. I'm glad you did that because I don't think we have the authority to grant permission to do that.
No, you only have authority to grant the conditions that are in the special use permit if there are details on the applicant's site plan that require other approvals. That condition that Tim listed covers that.
Okay. Thank you, Carrie.
You're welcome.
Are there any questions for staff regarding this case? If not, we'll...
I have one question. So, there was one... I drove around the lot today, and there's a lot of debris and stuff like that. Is there intent to clean all that up and remove all of the glass and stuff that's all around that's around the old school as part of this plan?
Carrie, do you want to take that?
I will. So, we've just been become aware of a potential nuisance that Ben at the back of the room would be enforcing. So, when the applicant comes up there to speak, they can answer the question, and then as the property is developed, we'll be sure to just basically enforce the nuisance code that that stuff was cleaned up.
Thank you, Tim.
I guess I do have one quick question.
Oh, go ahead.
You know, there's a lot of details in regards to the actual business here, you know, certain criteria. Exactly how are we to analyze this special use permit? I mean, are we supposed to take a hard look at every detail, as emergency procedures?
No, no, I don't think so. I think as courtesy, the applicant probably gave us an outline. See, if they were to come in without this and say, "I want a special use permit for airsoft", what the hell is air... I'm sorry, folks. What the heck is airsoft?
Right, okay.
No, it's good.
My mistake.
So, it's just a better idea of exactly what airsoft is? And we're just looking at granting it?
Make us familiar with it.
I got you. I got you.
There is the one document that says Plan of Operation for our ATS.
Yes.
It's got days and hours of operation, numbers of participants, parking, setback. All of those details are appropriate to just adopt as a condition of the approval. And it's not, it's nothing that's all that complicated. Philip, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, you're just...
I mean, it is more than you need. But if there's any part of that that would be a deal stopper if you didn't follow it up, then it should be a condition.
Gotcha.
Thank you, Tim.
Thanks.
Is Mr. Gene Blackburn here? Appreciate your patience in waiting so long to speak with us. If you would, please place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Planning Board on the matters at hand shall be the truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Thank you. For the record, please state your name and address.
My name is Gene Blackburn. I live at 5937 Polley Road, Brown Summit, North Carolina.
Okay. Now, you probably, before you begin, you've probably heard in our conversation that one of the things you're applying for is permission to use portable toilets for a period of up to, in a period up to 24 months. This board does not have the authority to give you permission to do that. So, when you submit your site plan, there may be other applications you will be required to make in order to be able to do that.
Okay.
But it's something that we can't grant. On the other hand, the setback that you're asking for, we could make that a condition of this special use permit and go ahead with this. So, if you're willing to forego your request for the 24-month period for the portable toilets, we can proceed with the rest of these cases.
That's fine.
Okay. Then, what is it you would like the planning board to know? You've given us an awful lot of information, which we appreciate.
Well, we tried to give what we could. Obviously, as said before, we are planning on putting an airsoft field in this section. The guidelines we are going by right now are the ones that are adopted for paintball. I guess the county doesn't have anything for airsoft at this time. And where paintball and airsoft have a whole lot in common, there are some differences. And we are proposing versus a 300-foot buffer around the property, a 100-foot buffer around the property, mainly because of the space that we have to work with, number one. And also, airsoft is a lot different from paintball as far as the velocity of the projectile and so forth. And so, which my son is here, and we can swear him in. He can testify to that a little bit better than I can. I'm a little bit too fat and old to be running around the field playing airsoft, but he's done it for four or five years. And so, he can kind of fill you in on that a little bit better. So, we want to put a 100-foot buffer around the property. It's completely wooded. It's very heavy woods. I don't think anything's... I'm very confident nothing's gonna go through it. And like I said, he can speak to that a little bit better. We've already contacted...
You are intending a fence in addition to the...
We are putting fencing from the gymnasium all the way to the wood line and from the back of the school all the way to the wood line. It'd be a 20-foot fence, airsoft fence. And then the school, obviously, the building itself is about 30-foot high at the lowest point. And so, I don't think anything's gonna get out in the road or in the area where the pedestrians are gonna be at or anything else. And then the woods themselves, that buffer zone, is gonna prevent anything from getting into any of our neighbors' property. Don't want it to get to the neighbors' property. But even if it should, it's all woods all around us anyway. So, I think we're safe pretty much all the way around as far as that's concerned.
Yeah.
The, as evidence, I can offer a quote from an insurance company we've contacted for liability insurance. We presented that plan to them, and they've approved that plan and given us a quote for going ahead with the program that way. And I think that's good evidence. We could look at the precedents of the fields around the state of North Carolina. There's about 11 or 12 airsoft fields across the state of North Carolina. Quite frankly, none of them, I've been able to find, even have a buffer around them. All of them just have woods around them. And most of them, if they have a spectator area, is what it's referred to, an area where the guests come in and so forth, they have a fence like we're proposing to separate that area so no one's gonna get hurt south side of the fence, obviously. So, all the activity takes place within that, for lack of a better word, battlefield, if you wanna call it that. And that should protect everybody there. So, that's kind of what we're proposing. That's what we're looking to do. We're using the inside of the building. It's just a structure. There's nothing going on there. There's no power in it. There's no sewage lines or anything involved in it. All we're doing is just working through the building, letting them play the game inside the building. And like I said, everything's secured within that perimeter. And so, that's what we're looking for. I would like for my son, if it's acceptable, you could swear him in. And like I said, he can testify a little bit more about the details or answer questions. That way, we're both there to answer questions, if that's acceptable.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Gene Blackburn before we call up Jeremy?
So, I had a question earlier about the cleanup.
Oh, okay, yeah, we're in the process. We've, the school, it's an old Williamsburg Elementary School. The school had been there for like 70 years. The last couple of years, I think, it's been completely closed up. Before that, it was in limited use. The county had turned it into a storage building, more or less. So, we have focused the last six months on cleaning out the inside. We ain't quite got to the outside yet. So, it's been pretty big challenge. But yes, the whole grounds will be cleaned up. There's been a lot of vandalism going on there, too, and stuff. So, you know, there's a lot, a lot of things had to be done. We are in the process of getting ready to probably put up security fences of some type up across the front of the property. Could try to limit some of that. And we've already started installing some lighting. Hopefully, it'll bring, make a little bit better place all the way around, hopefully, once we get done with everything.
All right, thank you, sir.
All right.
Jeremy? Do you solemnly swear affirm that the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Planning Board on the matters at hand shall be the truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Sir.
Okay. If you would, for the record, please state your name and address.
My name is Jeremy Blackburn. I live at 5825 Chris Monroe, Brown Summit, North Carolina.
Okay. You've sent us a lot of material, which we've read.
Yes, sir.
This, it's all very interesting. It, it's like, reminds me when I was a young lad, we used to have a thing called BB gun wars.
Yeah, those hurt worse. We've done that ourselves.
I've been shot in a couple of places I'd rather not mention.
There we go. So, to speak to that, I'm gonna pass something around. It's a little baggy, sorry. This is best way to carry paintballs. This is paintballs and there's some airsoft BBs in there. You'll be able to...
Okay.
But it's just for reference sake, for people who haven't seen it. I'm sure there's someone who probably has. It's just reference more than anything else. But just while you're looking at those, I'll talk about what I've been doing in the sport for a little while. I played paintball years ago when I was much younger. And I played it for a while, got back out of it. I got back into airsoft somewhere around six years ago. And I've been running my own team for the past two years. Service my own stuff. I'm very fluent with the people that are in the sport, including large vendors and either smaller vendors and smaller fields. Very fluid in rules, guidelines, pretty much anything you would, anything I can think of that you would want to know about the field, the guns, or the things that surround that. Safety rules, guidelines, things like that. I'm also very fluent in the energy that it takes to propel said objects. I'll talk with that very briefly and try to make it as simple as I can. The paintballs, they all shoot at about 300 feet a second. That's across the board, paintballs and airsoft. They shoot at the same speed. But the energy it takes to do that is quadruple. An airsoft BB takes about 1.5 joules, which is basically taking about three ounces and dropping it from about three feet. That's the energy. A paintball takes 13 joules. So, the amount of energy it takes to propel that object forward, like I said, is 13, almost 13 times as much, if not 10 times, in that area. So, one of the, one of those big factors that airsoft, you know, doesn't usually fence in the whole property is normally because it's acres, where paintball usually takes place in about a half acre, all netted in tournament-style play. That being said, the paintballs carry that much energy. When they do go, they keep moving. Where an airsoft BB at 1.5 joules, if it tags anything, it pretty much stops. In fact, if you're at 50 feet and you get hit, you better be paying attention. Not saying it doesn't hit you. You hit it, you know it. But it's nothing like a paintball. So, that's one of our big reasons behind, you know, the 100-foot instead of a 300-foot barrier. You can't shoot 300 feet, much less, you know, with an airsoft gun. So, if there's any questions y'all have, I'd be happy to answer.
I have a question. So, basically, what you're gonna be doing is some people are gonna go out on the property, and you're gonna shoot each other.
Technically, yes. That's...
Exactly.
So, most of the time, it's a family environment. Just, just... Most of the time, it's a family environment. The kids get involved, and the kids drag their dads into it, and that's just how it goes.
Dads and kids are going to shoot one another.
Yes, and love every minute of it.
Wait, you know, moms are gonna be in there, too.
I would as a girl.
That's one of the cool things that we're trying to do with ours that we'll set apart in a little bit. We're trying to have a couple safe, safety areas with viewing areas. And we're gonna later put out grills.
People watch this?
Oh, yes.
They watch each other shoot?
Oh, yeah. Oh, we might need a field trip to go try this out.
But we're gonna do that and try to put out some grills and make it a very, we're trying to make it a family event, less just dropping a kid off.
Yes.
You can cook while you shoot.
Who can shoot at the same time?
Let me put some perspective on it. I had three sons in a basement about 1,400 square feet and with airsoft guns. No one ever got hurt, nothing ever got broke. And they did it for years. In fact, when we moved out of that house, I probably vacuumed up about 500 little pellets.
Oh, you'll find it there. My wife hates me because of our dryer.
But hours and hours of fun with my kids and with the neighbors and their friends, it was...
It's a lot of fun, and there's a lot of really great people surrounding the sport. It's doing nothing but growing, especially on this coast. It's moving from out west this way. Just a lot of great people, to be honest with you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Jeremy Blackburn?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. What will probably be your hours of operation?
Normally, hours of operation are usually between nine and five on Saturday only. It's a very low impact kind of thing. There's a, I'm not sure if it's a shipping, what's the truck? There's a trucking place across the road. It makes a lot more noise than you're ever gonna hear from our property, especially with us hidden in the woods.
Yeah, so...
Is possibly alleged injuries. Do you have any facilities to take care of that?
We will have an onsite CPR slash, not full-fledged paramedic, but, you know, somebody that's gone through the classes for...
Trained at first aid.
Treatment of those kinds of things. Usually, referees are, at least one ref is required to have that kind of stuff.
At all times?
Pretty much, any time it's operating. So, one ref will be certified in CPR and, you know, and treatment of basic injuries. And then normally, we, like, the fire department is about four miles down the road. We communicate with whoever's the closest one, which would be a fire department, and have emergency content and information there on the wall, available quick and easy. But, yes, the airsoft injuries are almost, like, from the BBs, are almost nonexistent. I'm not saying that it doesn't happen. It's almost nonexistent. It's usually somebody sprinted too hard and didn't look at the tree that we're getting ready to run into. That happens. And that happens when your kids play in the backyard, too. But I'm just saying.
I have a question. So, your father said that you are not, y'all aren't gonna have any electricity or...
So, in the place structure, in the large building where you'll be playing, there won't be electricity. There's really no reason. If you put lights in it, they're just gonna shoot them out. Airsoft facilities, usually in those large structures like that, run minimal to no lighting. If it is, it's just emergency lighting. You can't keep it cool. They're gonna have the open, they're gonna have the doors open. You can't tell them, "Go use the bathroom in there where they're playing". So, there's no use for facilities inside that area. So, there will be power on our store side later when we get a pro shop open, but there won't be in that building. There'll be no use for power in that.
So, you've actually got some long-range plan? I mean, I read through there's some...
Yeah, we have long-range plans to expand.
Right.
This is just to get it, we're getting it off the ground. We're gonna make sure that the area supports it, and it will grow with us.
So, okay, you did say that you will have sanitary facilities. You'll have porta-johns to start out? to start out?
We have to get approval for that.
Did I just hear you say that they're not utilized?
No, they will be utilized. Like, if, if it's approved, which y'all can't do.
Yeah.
Well, if it's approved, then yes, they will be utilized, and it will be dependent on how many people are playing. So if we end up having, say, 50 people per weekend, the porta johns tell you, hey, you have to have this many for this night. So that will be that. Every airsoft field in this area uses porta johns. I'm not, y'all can't make that decision. I'm just telling you, that's just how it goes. I mean, it's a bunch of rough and tumble guys running around in the mud.
Shooting one another.
They use porta johns.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I just want to mention, you answered my question about hours of operation, nine to five. Is Monday through Friday, Saturday?
No, just Saturday. It's just Saturday for the field.
He just, he did say just Saturday.
Saturday.
Just Saturday. And that's for the field. Now, later on, when we open a pro shop, depending on supply and demand, we may have an open storefront, but play, play hours will just be, you know, Saturday. Now, if it does well enough, and we, we end up opening up a small section to younger children for Nerf play, then that may adjust to, you know, like birthday parties on Friday nights, I think, but that is like way long-term.
What about water availability?
Water will be on premises. We've got water there, and then sooner or later, we'll have to put bathrooms on property, even if we're approved for the first couple of years. So yes, water is on property, we just have to tap it.
Okay. Thank you. So you are willing, if the, if the market does well, you're actually willing to expand? I'm seeing summertime where you could have.
We want to expand. It's, the, the goal is for it to be a great place for families to get together, and not just to shoot, but to have a family time together with grills and cooking cells and bathrooms. But this is very experimental in this area. There's nothing else like it here. You're an hour and 15 minutes from any other field.
Yeah. Salem is the other one, right?
I'm sorry?
There's one near Winston.
There's one in Clemmons, which is a good hour and a half, and there's one on the other side of Melbourne, which is a good hour. So it has the possibilities to be fantastic. You've gotta go two hours, you know, passenger nothing in Virginia to get close to another on that one. So there's nothing around here like this. So it has the possibilities to be great and draw people in.
Any other questions for Mr. Jeremy Blackburn?
Just a statement, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank you, thank the gentleman for the detail, because in researching this, my 10 and 13-year-old was always inquisitive going, daddy, what's that?
Yeah.
And so now, depending on what happens with us and with the county commissioners, we've already got two fans, so they're excited to get.
We hope to see you out there. The more the merrier for us.
And they bring dad with them, too, so that works.
There you go. We appreciate that.
Scout troops gonna work.
Fantastic programs.
Well, good luck.
No, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate y'all.
I don't get it, but good luck.
It's a lot of fun. You can do it at the club.
No. No.
If there is no other questions or discussion, we can go to a motion.
Let me point out, you've got in your packet, the first page after the application is a plan of operation, and it, and it lists those days and hours.
Yes.
Pardon the setback. That would be an appropriate document to refer to as a condition, as well as the site plan. The other condition is that other, has already been listed in the staff report, and you can just reference that. The conditions in the staff report is what you can say.
Okay.
And those cover the other regulatory agencies that have to be, that have to give approval.
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I didn't want to do the whole. The planning board has reviewed the special use permit and adopts the following statements as required by the Rockingham County UDO, NCGS 153A-341 and 153A-342. After considering Rockingham County adopted comprehensive plans in UDO, the planning board approves 2021-02. This action is consistent with the adopted Rockingham County land use plan. At review of competent material and substantial evidence in the record, the board makes the following findings for the four conclusions necessary to approve a special use permit: that the use or development is located, designed, and proposed to be operated so as to maintain and promote the public health, safety, and general welfare; that the use or development complies with all required regulations and standards of this ordinance and with all applicable regulations; that the use or development is located, designed, and proposed to be operated so as to maintain or enhance the value of contiguous property; or that the use or development is public necessity. And the board finds, will the proposed business be compatible with the degree? And also that the use of development conforms with the general plans for the land use and development of Rockingham County as embodied in this chapter and in the Rockingham County UDO. Would also like to put in there, under additional comments, the plans of operation, specifically the hours of operation on the Saturdays, nine to six, and approval with site plan and conditions that the staff recommended.
A second.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. There being no opposition, the special use permit for case number 2021-01 is approved.
Y'all have fun.
And we have one last case to go here.
Thank y'all. Thank you, Dave. All right. Almost home. Okay. Last up, we have 2021-04. This is a special use permit application to allow for a double-wide manufactured home in a residential protected district. This property is approximately 2.91 acres, located near the intersection of Lindsay Bridge Road and Eden Church Road, about 2.5 miles from the Rockingham County and Stokes County line. The surrounding area is largely characterized by single-family residences and undeveloped lots. The property falls within the rural transition land class, which is land designated to accommodate existing residential neighborhoods, while also retaining the area's rural character, but with a strong demand for continued residential development. This case had no phone calls and no write-ins from the public. And based on staff analysis and the UDO requirements, the planning department recommends approval of case number 2021-04 with the following conditions. The applicant must comply with the site plan approved by and any other conditions imposed by the board. Number two, the applicant is responsible for obtaining and complying with all required permits and approvals. And number three, the applicant must follow all the requirements of the manufactured housing Class 2A special use permit, which are listed in the Rockingham County Unified Development
Are there any questions for staff?
I was pulled, this does have quite a few other manufactured homes in the neighborhood. And I think we just, that map doesn't reflect it in the packet, I, I think. Yeah. But there are several, several others in that area. And I could send Tim something if you guys want to see it.
Carrie, don't, don't a couple of those on Eden Church Road, is, is at least one of those a manufactured home?
That, yeah, several of them are. Several of them on Eden Church Road are. And I can even, I can just, I can send Tim a, a quick screenshot if y'all want to see it. There's, um, counting them, there's like, one, two, three, four, five, six, eight on Eden Church Road. Nine, sorry, there's nine on Eden Church Road.
Okay, thank you, Tim. According to our application, the applicant is Oakwood Homes. Is there someone here to speak for Oakwood Homes? Place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the evidence and testimony shall present to the Rockingham County Planning Board on the matters at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and address for the record.
Gina Barnes. 916 South Van Buren Road, Eden, North Carolina.
And are you an employee of Oakwood Homes?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
I'm their project manager. I handle all permitting, on-site construction, subcontracting, inspections, and compliance with inspections.
Okay. And was it, what is it that you would like the planning board to know about this application?
That this, this particular customer of ours has owned, has owned this property for several years and had, due to the storms we had earlier last year, have forced them out of their home. And this is their, in their price range. And also, it's a good fit for the neighborhood, because like Carrie said, two lots down, I've, I've placed a home for the Smiths. I've actually placed two on that property. Two lots up on Lindsay Bridge, I've placed two. And I've placed four on Eden Church Road within my circumference of work.
Does anyone have any questions for Gina, right?
Yes, sir.
No questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is, uh, is Tom, is it Han, Rand?
Anne.
Man?
We, we signed, we thought we had, that was the roll call. We didn't realize it was for anyone to speak. Unless he has something to add, this is the property owner.
Oh, okay.
I spoke on our behalf.
Okay. How about Travis, Beaufort?
He's, he's an employee of Oakwood Homes.
Oh, okay. And you have essentially the same thing? Okay.
Sorry.
Well, it doesn't appear that there's any questions for this application. Shall we go directly to, unless there's some discussion? It sounds like.
Straightforward.
The application is really consistent with the rest of the residential housing in that area. Shall we go directly to motion? Okay.
The planning board has reviewed the special use permit and adopts.
Adops the following statements as required by the Rockingham UDO and NS, NCGS 153A-341 and 153A-342. After considering Rockingham County adopted comprehensive plans in UDO, the planning board approves case number 2021-04. This action is consistent with the adopted Rockingham County land use plan. At review of competent material and substantial evidence in the record, the board makes the following findings for the four conclusions necessary to approve a special use permit: that the use or development is located, designed, and, and proposed to be operated so as to maintain and promote the public health, safety, and general welfare; that the use or development complies with all required regulations and standards of this ordinance and with all other applicable regulations; that the use or development is located, designed, and proposed to be operated so as to maintain or enhance the value of contiguous property; or that the use or development is, is a public necessity; and that the use or development conforms with the general plans for the land use and development of Rockingham County as embodied in this chapter and in the Rockingham County UDO.
A second.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. There being no opposition, the application for the special use permit is approved. That concludes our cases for this evening. Carrie, do we have, we're showing no old business.
Right.
The new business update on the land use plan and UDO. I'm seeing in the, I'm seeing in the newspapers, an advertisement that the commissioners are gonna vote on the approving the, the land use plan on the 19th.
That's correct. That's on their agenda. They may, they may or may not approve it. That action has to be advertised, so whether they approve it that night or use that opportunity to discuss it, it, we, we shall see. And I'm only pointing that out because I don't, you know, they, they're not to feel pressured to make a decision, but should they make a decision, it had to be advertised.
Yeah. I had thought about attending that meeting. Do you think that's necessary?
I think it's a really, I think it's a good idea.
Okay.
If they have any questions about the board's input, you can represent the board as the chair.
Okay.
I think that's a, a great idea, just in case they have questions.
Okay. I can be there.
And then your, your next meeting in January is gonna be conducted as a workshop to review the revised UDO.
All right. And speaking to that, board members, I have a request that in the future, if there's any confusion about when we're gonna meet or what purpose we're gonna meet for, or if you would like to, to schedule a special meeting, I'd ask you to bear in mind that we're subject to the North Carolina General Statute 148, and I believe it's Section 314, the public meetings law. Even if two of us get together and have an ex parte discussion without the rest of the group, we're really in violation of that law. So if you would, please make me your initial contact. And to that end, I'm gonna pass out my business cards, which have my contact information on it. You can do it by phone, by email. Here, send these down there. And I'll be glad to answer your question the best I can. And if I don't have the answer, I'll get to get, get it with Carrie and get you an answer.
That's helpful.
Thank you.
But then, in this case, we had already scheduled a meeting for, for this, for January, and that wasn't, it was always intended to be a workshop. I think it, there was some confusion because it just looked like it was another zoning planning board meeting, but the, there, we made sure not to put any cases on the agenda, so it's just gonna be discussing the UDO.
Remind me, that's the 25th?
Yes.
Okay.
And then February 22nd is a similar, similar situation. We'll hold a meeting with continuing the workshop discussion, and then, as you are comfortable, to recommend adoption or recommend against adoption. You can also make that decision at that meeting. So we'll, we'll continue the, my assumption is that you'll want to continue some discussion from January, so you're not pressured. But then, the expectation is that you'll have had time to make a decision by the end of the February meeting. So given that, as far as having you be comfortable, I don't, I don't know if we, Tim and I talked a little bit about paper copies versus digital. I can't remember. Tim, did we, did we poll these guys to find out what they wanted to do?
As far as the notices part of this? I'm sorry, I was.
The actual, the actual.
I can't hear, I can't hear you, but Paul, you can tell me what.
Yeah, we need, yeah, we need paper.
Yeah. We need paper.
Yeah.
Kill a tree.
Did you get that, Carrie?
That's fine. I, that's what, I see, that's why I brought it up, because I figured, it's, it's kind of a big, it's a big deal. We'll make paper copies and, I mean, Tim, we can get them paper copies at any time. We don't have to wait for, for our packet deadline.
Yeah.
But let, we'll talk about it to make sure that what we've got from Eric is ready to go to them. And so we'll just promise to get it to you as soon as we can. And that should be, that should be pretty soon.
And Carrie, is it okay, like, once we go through that on the 25th, and let's say we have questions in between that and maybe the 22nd meeting? Is it okay if we just call staff, or is that, is that the protocol, that I should just reach out to staff if there's any questions that come up after?
Yes.
Our meeting? Okay.
Yep. And there's even, there's times when I can get the consultant on the phone also. He's been, he's been ma, he's made himself available for discussions, if it would help. But yeah, that's the thing, that's the thing to do, Philip, thanks, to, to reach out to Tim or myself. And I'm, y'all, I'm home recovering from hip surgery, but I've been working. But my, my phone number comes, comes to my phone here, and my, and I'm available by email, too.
I think, I think you've contacted me a couple of times.
I think, I think you've contacted me a couple of times from via your cell phone, so...
Yeah, yeah.
I'll attest to that.
It's fine. And I can, I can, I'll email it to everybody, because it's the best thing to do there.
Welcome to adjourn.
It's time to...
All those in favor, please signify. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
She had it keyed up, didn't she?